Yes, right.
You might find it beneficial to improve the language regarding nicotine containing, because I think the problem for, you know, a lot of kids who do this, it's the nicotine.
I think I got them all.
Okay.
Yes, so the nicotine count is a lot.
Yeah, you're right, actually.
Nicotine, so use the language of nicotine, you know, related to inhalation devices or products.
Yeah.
That way there you don't have to worry about any specific type that a company manufactures and puts a new label on it. It's say, hey, juveniles with nicotine not allowed.
Right.
Good evening. Welcome to our first meeting of the Newmarket Town Council in 2019.
Speak up.
Okay, let me use the, is this gonna, this is not gonna help. Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the first meeting in 2019 of the Newmarket Town Council. And this is personally for me, the biggest crowd I've seen at one of our town council meetings, so welcome to all. Thank you for coming, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to begin with a couple of sessions for public input. Let me explain that the first one is on, is a public forum where comments are more open, and then that will be followed by two public hearings. One for resolution to approve municipal bonds for the McAllen Dam, and one to re, to approve the issuance of municipal bonds for, or really to, these are resolutions to go before the voters, to approve resolutions for the McAllen Dam and for the water and sister improvements. So again, to state that there's a public forum that is general, and then there are two public hearings on the dam and on the water system improvements. All of these have certain requirements, and since there's a lot of people, I'm going to read the rules and requirements for the public hearings and forums. It's for residents of Newmarket only to speak unless someone else is requested. It is limited to five minutes per person, and if everybody takes five minutes, we could be here a long, long time, so please try to limit repeating what somebody else has said. And it's not really a time for back and forth between the town council and the members of the public. It's for the person, member of the public to make their statement, which we will take into, and then the pub, town council will have their own deliberations among each other. So with that, at 7:02, I will, we will begin with the public forum, and I'll also mention that councillor Weinstein is just a few minutes late. She'll be here about 7:15. Everybody else is here. And again, for Newmarket residents, and please state your name and address when you come to the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Chris Hawkins. I'm your town moderator. I'm just coming to be here for my annual visit prior to the town meeting to remind the council that it's very helpful for me to have some kind of a script in advance to understand who's making various motions and who's seconding them, so that we can proceed in a very organized way, people can address the merits in more organized ways, if you have. There's a new requirement in the state waters here that the person who moves, makes the motion, the seconds it has to be recorded in the record, their address and name to be recorded in the records, that's something to think about. So I'm just here to remind you, this isn't going to be tonight, this incident, you've got plenty of things to talk about tonight, but prior to the meeting, if I can have from you who's, who's going to be addressing what, which is just very, very helpful. And lastly, testify, a week ago tomorrow, Thursday, before the House election committee, there's another bill pending in the House to clarify the authority of moderators to postpone elections in the event of some kind of emergency. Testify in favor of that bill, along with many other moderators, elected officials from around the state. The Senate is going to bring forward a bill also, and I call on you to go back and testify, consistent with what we've discussed in the past, just to let you know that's happening.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
We're now at 56 Caris Road. We're all aware of the charter, good conversation to have, considering it comes every 10 years. Any changes that we may want to put into the charter? Last time around, we had about eight out of 12 of the things I put in there. One thing I left out was commissions. There's a reason why I left commissions out, discussion back and forth. In the charter, one particular person was having arguments on TV back and forth about these new bills and what have you. Well, that's fine with other towns. They have to be aware that this town is a charter town, so a couple charter towns. So we don't pull off of other towns what they do, because if you do that, somebody can wander, wander along, get you and bend you in jurisdiction, and can go and file a lawsuit to you in federal court. Okay, 13 circuits, take you right down, because you're not following the state, and you're not following the Fed at that time. You're a corporation, you're holding yourself within a corporation, which makes you an entity and person. You've got to be very careful what I, been going on for weeks, watch TV, and I just kind of walk away. Okay? Now I'm walking away, and the charter has reared its ugly head on a few other subjects that I haven't been able to litigate through. Unfortunately, being the town as a corporation, again, I have a conflict between the attorney, a particular gentleman that's in this, a town employee, there we are, town employee, okay, and unions, okay, retaliation. Three dash 15 on your charter was put in there. Give you an example, try to give you an example, like Portsmouth's situation in the Wentworth case, where they had a commission that took unions and police department and everybody on a loop, loop on the employee, so it would transfer liability to the commission. Newmarket does not have that checks and balances. We went through that particular thing, because a person decides to sit as an employee on election, on running that charter, and then retire. Maybe the first thing I need to say is, that's the Administrative Procedures Act, your federal administrative procedures act. So if a person has a grievance with the town, they have no choice but to go to the union members that are sitting on the board, and you become the judicial branch of our, of our government on if you're wronged. When you refuse it, it goes up to.
Mr. Allen, I think, I just want you to know, I think you have about 30 seconds left.
It goes up to one of the 13 circuits. I have a problem that I have in the future, need to deal, deal with, and I need to deal with non-public, but I can't deal, we're going to have a conflict of interest with the attorney that you have. So we must deal with it. Something we need to keep in mind on that charter, I mean, I'm.
I think, I think that's about your five minutes. We have a lot of people here.
It is five minutes.
It's a five-minute limit per person.
Yes, okay.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, council members and town talk. I was here on the, my name is Larry Doyle, I live at 116 Main Street in Newmarket.
Thank you.
I was here in the presumption that you hear the Water Rights Subcommittee members made a recommendation to you about the resident proposed Newmarket Freedom from Chemical Trespass Rights-based Ordinance. May I ask if that's so?
May I? Yes.
Yeah, I'll go on if I may?
Well, you can certainly make a statement, but is there a?
Am I allowed to respond?
Yeah.
Oh, I wasn't sure if I could or not. The recommendation's been drafted, the subcommittee has reviewed. I think with time requirements tonight, though, it won't be discussed.
You gotta speak up, project.
Forgive me.
Speaking to the mic. Sorry. The draft has been written. It does not project overhead.
Hi, can you hear me now? Lovely. The draft that the subcommittee had worked on for the recommendation has been sent amongst ourselves and the town administrator, has been finalized, and will be presented tonight due to the fact that we have a very large discussion ahead of ourselves, and I will be at the budget committee meeting immediately after the warrant articles. At our next meeting, I will present it to the town council, and you're more than free to talk about it at that point. You can also continue to discuss it, to discuss it tonight. But I won't have anything official to come before this body at this meeting.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll see my time then, and, oh, I'm sorry, all right, yes, I will. Well, this ordinance seeks to protect Newmarket's people and its Lamprey River and Great Bay estuary watershed, while the committee members have forecasted that they will recommend that Newmarket's town council henceforth seriously consider future resident proposed rights-based ordinances, also known as RBOs. They've also forecasted they will not recommend the currently proposed Newmarket Freedom from Chemical Trespass RBO. In response, and as a member of ANCER, A-N-C-E-R, here is the first of seven responses to the committee members' assertions made during their founding meeting considering the RBO. The committee member assertion I'll respond to is as follows. "The RBO is an exciting progressive approach to change," this was said. My response to this is that it is true, but because RBOs are based on rights affirmed in New Hampshire's Bill of Rights, they're also conservatively unifying a phenomenon covered in a UNH sociologist's clip around 216 article titled "A Lot of Concerns Unites Citizen Activists: A Community Rights Movement Transcends Party Age and Gender." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kenny Nagel. I live at 288 Quanti Falls Road in Newmarket. The committee member assertion I'll respond to, per the RBOs, is as follows. "We don't know what unintended consequences RBOs will cause." My response to that is that is true, but 15 RBOs adopted by 11 New Hampshire towns haven't had any, whereas the CDC reported in July 2018 the unintended consequences of water contamination. New Hampshire has the country's highest rate of pediatric cancers, including state and federally recognized clusters of rare cancers in seacoast areas contaminated by PFAs, PFOs slash PFOAs, and PFCs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, council members. My name is Glenn Truquair. I live at 156A Exeter Road in Newmarket. The committee member's assertion I'll respond to is as follows. "We should wait until an amendment to the New Hampshire Bill of Rights has officially recognized RBO making, so we've authority to instate them." My response to this is that last year, the New Hampshire Community Rights Amendment received support from one-third New Hampshire's House. This year in 2019, Newmarket's representative, Ellen Reed, will sponsor it again. If it passes New Hampshire's House and Senate and is voted in by New Hampshire's people, it'll protect RBOs by recognizing people's rights to adopt them, but it won't make RBOs official. What makes RBOs official is individuals' inherent and inalienable rights to self-determine, exercise collective in a vote of the townspeople, in a vote of the townspeople. Newmarket's charter doesn't allow residents to vote on non-budgetary matters, leaving them dependent on town council members to adopt RBOs according to their oath to uphold Newmarket's, Newmarketers' rights as enumerated in New Hampshire Bill of Rights. Outside Newmarket, New Hampshire, townspeople who can make an RBO, RBO vote haven't waited for the amendment because they and their ecosystems cannot afford to, and because they know that they and all New Hampshire's people already have the inherent and inalienable authority to adopt RBOs as affirmed by New Hampshire Bill of Rights Articles 1, 2, 3, 8, 10, and 23. I would like to finish with a rhetorical question. Do you lock your home doors at night before going to bed? Yet, if you look around, there's nobody there. No imminent threat. Do you lock your car when you park in a city? Yet again, if you look around, no imminent threat. Do you have life insurance, health insurance, homeowner's insurance? I'm assuming the answer, of course, is yes to all of these, yet you take out these protections to insert the protection of yourself and your family. The position that we do not need an RBO because we do not see imminent threat is without merit and baseless. It is disingenuous to the needs and safety of the citizens of our Newmarket community. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Andrew Dumeo. I live at 147 Main Street, Apartment 2 in Newmarket. The committee member assertion I'll respond to is as follows. "Change has always been achieved by moving through governmental process." My response to this is that systematic change in every large people's movement has always required moving outside governmental process in order to right legal wrongs. In my professional life, I worked for Second Nature, a nonprofit organization that has successfully catalyzed universities representing one-third of American college students to aggressively pursue carbon neutrality. Second Nature exists because our government's response to the threat of climate change has been and remains inadequate. Second Nature's network represents our nation's first coordinated industry-wide successful response to the threat of climate change. We have achieved this by mobilizing a coalition of scientists, activists, and higher-ed professionals to convince universities to lower their greenhouse gas emissions, which again, has happened by organizing outside of governmental process. Moving back to the issue of the RBO, in New Hampshire, even with legislation trying to address the matter, it is legal to release PFAs, PFOs, PFOAs, and PFCs into our water at safe limits that yet bioaccumulate and cause cancer. If the people's community rights movement stays to governmental process without including RBOs, we'll be apologizing to future generations and saying, sorry, water contamination, let's leave it.
Good evening, council members. My name is Stacy Mazer, and I live at 5 Trick Street in Newmarket. The committee member assertion I'll respond to is as follows. "We shouldn't be a fiefdom telling other towns what they can and can't do." My response to this is that protecting water is basic survival. It is not about controlling and regulating other towns. It's about recognizing rights of water in people everywhere. If other towns approve use of chemicals that end up in Newmarket's water, and if Newmarket's town council adopts an RBO banning those chemicals, then the people of other towns would deal with the RBO like they must deal with any other differing ordinance New Hampshire towns have on various issues.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jessica Waters. I live at 147 Main Street, Number 2. The committee member assertion I'll respond to is as follows. "What's the point of the RBO? We have no direct threat." My response is that the direct threat is that Newmarket's people are unempowered to vote on local governing decisions that afford greater protection than harms legalized by the state. The RBO would empower Newmarketers, their community, and their ecosystems with local governing authority to address harmful activities, even to the point of saying no amount of harm is okay. So the proposed RBO's point is proactivity. For instance, and according to a Newmarket Conservation Commission member, town gravel pits are potentially destined to be landfills. The RBO would help Newmarketers avoid finding out decades from now, like Greenlanders have with their Copley landfill, that landfill leaching poisoned our water. The RBO would also help Newmarketers avoid fight after fight over harms already in town, including PFAs in their car wash's Teflon shine service, and the towns' use of cancer-causing glyphosate for weed control. Furthermore, ever sources, Seacoast Reliability Project will stir up hundreds of years of industry toxins in Little Bay to mix with P's PFAs contamination already in Great Bay. While the U.S. Geological Survey and EPA determine the porousness of the bay's bedrock, which allows chemicals to drain into groundwater from which Newmarket draws drinking water, the SEC, per NHDES recommendation, determine the project's toxins are not concerning for surrounding water sheds. I want to speak personally for a moment. I took a job in cancer patient advocacy directly out of college. There was a patient I used to work with who was receiving a particularly nasty chemotherapy. His average session took about eight hours. When I would visit him in the chemo area, he would joke that I was the only person in the room who actually wanted to be there, and he was right, I chose that job, but he didn't choose to get cancer. We have state and federally recognized cancer clusters in our region. The incidence rate of all cancers in Rockingham County is higher than both the state and national averages by a significant margin. As was discussed in the testimony I just read on behalf of ANCER, we already know we are exposed to carcinogens. We already know they are affecting us. We already know some of these carcinogens are in the water. We have 22 active EPA Superfund sites in New Hampshire. Nearly half of those are in our watershed. So we are faced with a choice between accepting that and claiming that this is not, in fact, a direct threat to the health of the people of Newmarket, or taking preventative action now to keep it from getting worse. We are faced with a choice between taking a chance on the RBO or simply waiting until we no longer have a choice, and it's us, or our spouse, or our children, or our neighbors who are sitting in the chemo chair from 8:00 in the morning to 6:00 o'clock at night. You have the facts, you are able to assess the risk. If doing nothing increases the chance of that by any percentage, I ask, how can it be justified? Any gambler would tell you these are bad odds, and the people in this room, all of them, do not even get the choice whether or not to take the bet. Only the councillors get to make that choice for everyone. So I ask you, council members, to please change the game, because I don't want to play this one.
Good evening, council members. My name is Monica Christofili. I live at 6 Central Street in Newmarket. The committee member assertion I'll respond to is as follows. "We shouldn't just, we should just work for the regulatory agencies." My response to this is that regulatory agencies facilitate corporate projects and allow certain amounts of harm. They don't protect people or ecosystems. We see this in the fact that NHDES and the SEC approved the Seacoast Reliability Project this fall. We see this in the fact that regulatory agencies do not require Saicobain to stop using the PFAs that are poisoning Merrimack residents and ecosystems. The agencies simply require that the company provide water filters that cannot filter out the PFAs. It doesn't get much more insulting than that when I'm asked to work through the regulatory system. Of course, agencies won't ban contamination because it's neither their job nor legal place to, and so it remains to we, the people, to do so because our lives depend on it and because no one else will do it, and because we have the right to do it. If this assertion about the right still sounds crazy to you, either because you simply don't want to entertain it, or because you more frankly dismiss the constitutional analysis supporting it, perhaps the rights of a rights-based ordinance will sit more easily with you if we consider the words of Martin Luther King, whose holiday it was Monday. "There comes a time when one must take a position that is neither safe, nor politic, nor popular, but he must take it because his conscience tells him it's right. And, almost always, the creative dedicated minority has made the world better." Author and journalist Rebecca Solnit echoes that last sentiment. She says, "The histories of change that have made me hopeful are often about small groups that seem at the outset unrealistic in their ambition. Whether taking on slavery or human rights, these movements grew exponentially and changed consciousness." The people of New Hampshire and those of us in Newmarket who want clean water are coming forward to change consciousness, to point out how the institutions of regulation are not protecting we, the people, as we need to be. Rather, these agencies and current law and government function protect corporations and their projects more than they protect us. So we witness here before all of you and stand on our rights to say that we cannot be told how much we can or can't protect our water. On a personal note, I am tired, but I am not deterred. I know it's going to take small groups like ours to make the big changes we need. Groups like ours work to help our fellow citizens see what needs to change about our current regulatory and governmental systems. I have an example for you. For the past couple of years, 2018 New Hampshire congressional candidate Mindy Mesmer was a representative out of rye. Even as a Democrat in a Republican-controlled House and Senate, which included a bill, excuse me, with a Republican governor, she had a successful legislative record, which included a bill that Governor Sununu signed into law this past summer. It gave NHDES the go-ahead to go beyond the EPA's recommendations to further decrease the level of PFAs allowed in New Hampshire's water. Why did Sununu sign this into law? For two reasons. One, our problems are real. The CDC announced this past summer that New Hampshire has the highest rate of pediatric cancer in the country, as you've already heard, and the PFAs contamination causing this cancer is within the vicinity of Newmarket. The second reason he signed it into law is because he knew it wouldn't do anything, which it didn't. NHDES announced this past month that it will not be lowering the amounts of PFAs allowed in New Hampshire water, despite the cancer clusters connected to the same contamination they will not lower. I forecast this outcome in a letter to the editor, saying that the new law would do nothing, hard fought as it was for by Mindy Mesmer. So why am I tired? Because I keep getting told to work through the regulatory agencies that won't lower the poisons in my sons' and daughters' waters. I keep being told to work through the legislature, but the laws do nothing. Not for the particular issue of preventing our communities from becoming sacrifice zones for corporate contamination, and we already are contaminated. It's here. The chemicals are in the Great Bay, which is porous bedrock, which comes into our watershed, and that's just one example. I don't want to have to keep fighting individual fight after fight, only to have my kids become teenagers added to the list of the cancer clusters. The RBO allows a community to come together to practically say, no more contamination, to say we want business, but only the kind that is not poisoning us, and that simply is not hyperbole. For one example, the RBO allows us to inform our council members that they must stop using our tax dollars to pay for cancer-causing glyphosate as our town's current form of weed control, which we are currently using. Examples and explanations aside, we know our town charter doesn't let us vote on this RBO, and we know you are not going to adopt it for us right now, but we are not giving up, and we will continue to help educate you on why we have the right to instate an RBO, and why, without our town charter allowing us to vote on it, it is up to you to adopt it for us, in line with the oath you took to uphold our rights in the New Hampshire Bill of Rights. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening, Michael Cahill, Ashmore Road. I'd like to speak in favor of the ordinance to raise the age for tobacco and vaping products to 21. I'm a co-sponsor of David's, similar to David Waters' bill, to make that statewide law, but if that should not happen, we will at least have done that for the people of New Market. I'd like you to ask any one of you who's a former or current smoker, five, 10 years in, are you glad you started smoking? Is that really a choice that you were happy that you made and, you know, happy with the outcome? It's not something we want to reflect on our young people, and raising the age to 21 will help mitigate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pia Bickford. I live at 14 Ham Street in Newmarket. Happy to see all you tonight, and really happy to see all of you folks who are obviously here to support our Newmarket Rights-Based Ordinance. That's really terrific. To round out ANCER's statements and to follow up on Monica's point that we're not going to give up on this, please know that we've taken notes on the changes in the languages and the focus that the subcommittee would like to see in the current resident proposed RBO. But most importantly at this time, I'd like to invite you as a whole to adopt a resolution in support of this year's proposed New Hampshire Community Rights Amendment. Last year, prime sponsored by Newmarket representative Ellen Reed, and with bipartisan cosponsors, the New Hampshire Community Rights Amendment earned a one-third support in the New Hampshire House. It is back this year, and with the legislative label C-A-C-R-A, and it will go into committee hearing any week now. This amendment would specifically recognize and enumerate in our New Hampshire Bill of Rights the pathway that the people of New Hampshire already inherently and inalienably have to instate RBOs. More simply, it would make this whole RBO process much easier, especially in towns like ours, where our town charter does not allow us to vote on something like this RBO and whether or not we want chemical trespass in our town. If you would like to move forward with adopting such a resolution, please see the draft resolution I will hand out to you at the end of my comments. You'll find that the resolution is drafted specifically for Newmarket and adoption by the council. It still has the draft watermark on it, in case you'd like to suggest any changes before adopting it, and ANCER would be happy to collaborate on changes with you. Please be in touch with us. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for, to the subcommittee members for your attention to this, it was really awesome process. So is it okay if I approach?
Please provide it to Patricia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christian Matthews. I live at thirty-one Kimball Way. We moved here about a home about seven months ago, and we've been trying to follow what's going on in the town, getting updates, and it's been a little hard. One specific issue is that there was a Conservation Commission meeting on the tenth of January. I emailed the town that the town video doesn't have audio, so anyone watching that who couldn't make it, couldn't find out what was going on. I called our administrator, just let them know, I left a voicemail saying, "Hey, there's no audio to this video." As of today, there's still no audio. There was a presentation about the dam in that meeting, so anyone who couldn't make that meeting didn't have an opportunity to view that. So it's kind of hard as a new town member to find out what's going on in the town when we don't have audio to our meetings, we don't get responses from the town administrator. This is a consistent problem I've seen across the board with town departments, town councils, boards, not having agendas posted, not having minutes posted online. If we're going to have online technology, videos, agendas, minutes, it'd be really helpful as a newish town member, probably everyone else in the room, if that information was posted in advance. So that's all I'm asking for, is just, you all do a great job, you show up at seven for those nine meetings. Not everyone can make it, but, you know, it'd really help for the people who can't make it, if we're making sure that those videos have audio, that the agendas are posted in advance, if the meeting minutes are posted before the next meeting. If you want to share more information later, I've emailed Steve about this at lunch, and I haven't really gotten any response, so thank you very much.
May I address that?
Sure. All town council agendas go, excuse me, I gotta speak. All town council agendas are posted the Friday before the meeting, after they're closed. That includes all backup information. That one meeting, there was a technical difficulty with the audio. Early meetings, that does happen, once in a while, we do have technical difficulties. But sound is normally part of a meeting, it is tonight, for what is being recorded. Other committees, we try to put up as much as information we can, as we receive as well. I mean, if we don't give backup information from the public or people presenting till after they come to the meeting, we cannot do that either. But I can assure you that council meetings are all posted the Friday before, and it's a full packet. I mean, we're, the councils are all going off that packet as well.
I'm seeing no one else to make comments during public forums, so at this point, we'd close public forum, and we move on to the first public hearing. And that is, that public hearing is for Resolution 2018-19, uh, eighteen, issuance of $2 million in municipal bonds from McAllen Dam. And would, sure, begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can everybody hear me? I want to wait, I want to wait before people leave, so there's no more disruptions. In the back, can you hear me? Okay. I tried to be a little, I'm losing my voice a little bit, so I apologize. The way this happened began was in 2010, the town of New Market received a letter deficiency issued by the Department of Environmental Services on the McAllen Dam. The town owns the McAllen Dam as part of the process of when the town took ownership of the mills and sold it to the NCDC, who ultimately sold it to the Timber Corporation for the development down there. Originally, there was discussion about removing the dam. During that time, there was public meetings back in 2010, and probably actually was more people in the room than now, and it was greatly opposed to removal of the dam at that time. The council appointed a, what they called the McAllen Dam Subcommittee to review it, and hired GZA, Geo-Environmental in 2018, after review, after the committee reviewed, to recommend this, not reconstruction, but the betterment of the dam for, that could be preserved in the future. 2018, GZA was hired, and they have completed a sixty percent at this point design. Can't get in there till you actually have some more funds, so we do have the cost estimate of not to exceed $2 million to do that project. So it would save the dam, it would also install some, and upgrade the gates, so it'd be automatic in case of flooding, and, as well as some impoundments on the side to improve safety there as well.
Is there anybody that wants to make a statement, public statement about the dam at this point?
Joe Lamatina, Thirteenth Gray Hill Drive, New Market. Also, want to make it clear that I own a condo on River Ridge, right on the road. So that I can make an intelligent decision, photo code intelligent, whatever that may mean. Is it possible to potentially revisit maybe the cost of taking down the dam? Is that, is that completely off the table?
Yeah, well, I was just going to answer that, you know, this isn't really a Q and A of the, of the process. I'll just state as a general thing, I think we'll be providing more information background to it. And again, not, we're generally not going to have a Q and A here, but I will say, it's very complicated to estimate. We already, you know, five years ago, six years ago, when I got first got started on the council, member of the dam committee, that was actually a study to address the costs of dam removal. So it's an expensive thing to look at it in updated sessions. We have, so I'll leave it at that, but that's, the way the process works, we've spent a lot of money coming up with this proposal, which we will vote on, and then if, then depending on what happens, we might have to address other things. But one thing I will, I think we will, as a dam committee, be trying to do, is provide more background information, because years, literal years of meetings have been spent looking at many of these other options.
I definitely understand that, so I have to bring it up so that, again, people can make an informed decision.
Go ahead.
Real quick, there's been numbers thrown around there about how much it would cost to remove the dam, that it would cost less than to actually fix it. Exeter, remove the dam in, on their river. It actually costs more money than it's, we're proposing to fix our dam. So it's, it's, we don't know, we didn't go down that, far down the road, because it wasn't palatable at that point in time to remove it, but the estimates were much, were higher than what it would cost to fix it.
The other question that I have then is also, the $2 million that you're proposing, that's making improvements to the dam and getting us past a certain point where the EPA or whatever says that is deficient, correct? Is that a true statement?
It'll address deficiencies.
Okay, so how long does this $2 million last? I mean, are we looking five years down the road?
No.
Or potentially you have to do something additional?
We'll, we'll do maintenance, which we should do with all public infrastructure, but it should last for a long time. It's not a, not a quick five, it's not a five-year fix, it's a long-term.
It's a long term.
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm Bernard Gordon. I live at Sixth Bay Road. I've been living in Newark and Endur since nineteen seventy-one, so I feel like a, a part of the community. I want to first of all congratulate the council on the work that they've done to look at the dam project and to look at the issues. Then I want to report, I have a son whose name is Josh Gordon, some of you may know. He's a swimmer, he swam, swimmer, swam, every swimmable lake in the state, and he reports to me that, when he looks at all the towns in the state, New Market, he says this really seriously, he says, "New Market has got it all together." He goes, "New Market has basically, essentially, the best town of all." I want to speak in support of the dam. We are looking at two warrant articles. $10 million to improve our water supply, $2 million to replace, to repair the dam. I've attended meetings with the engineering group, and they made a very impressive presentation. What the town administrator just said, that they proposed a fix that is a long-term fix. I want to speak frankly to the issues, because fixing the dam is not a, a project that is going to somehow bring money into the town directly. But we have to recognize that what the dam represents is a tremendously attractive opportunity for the town. You have to think about why people come to visit New Market. This may sound striking, odd to some of us, because we live here, we see it all the time. But people come to New Market, and they enjoy looking at, seeing, knowing what the historical value is of the town, for all of these kinds of reasons. They are not dollars and cents reasons, but the town's attractiveness is enhanced by the fact that we have that dam. So I would say, recognizing, of course, that $2 million is not a small amount of money, but to maintain an important asset of the town, which will be in existence for a significant period of time, is a good opportunity. So I want to congratulate the town council for the work that you've done. I understand that, basically, people are favorable. I want to add my voice to that, and I hope people will support the dam project when the vote comes up in a month or so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to speak in behalf of the dam. People are leaving out quite a few lodge, lodge things that that dam does. There is a lot of, this being a mill town, sediment is about sixty feet deep. These persons over here were talking about cancer clusters, per usual, is whatever you spin your literature, too. All this radon gas units that you see in the basements, radon gas is depleted by uranium. It's green, it's a little heavier weight than gold. Is it around here? Of course it is. We have three silver mines within a close range of this office here. What do you find around here? You find uranium. When uranium depletes, where does it have to be? It has to be in granite, which makes radon gas. That's why I put radon gas in the basements of some of these units, especially the old ones that have the rocks in the house, because it's emitting uranium, like it does look like, little green crystals, they're gemstones. You pick it up with a backpack, sleuth, if you're out playing around, hitting, panning for gold around some of these rivers, you'd be surprised, like sliding rock. I wouldn't go down below ten feet on the mud there, a good way to get yourself leg cancer real quick. There's more than just leg cancer. A lot of these mills in nineteen hundreds, especially the, one of the parking lot, used arsenics. You got up on Spring Street, up behind, which was supposed to be a parking lot, up behind in the ball field, that was a dump. That was a chemical dump. They put it encased in granite. Look at the numbers that are coming off of that. They're talking cancer, they're worried about this. Those are coming from radon gas. You've got people, professors here that know that, that are around here, skewing information handed to these, the corporation, okay, it's a nonprofit, stuffing it down our throat. I'll give you one thing that's changing that particular law. You walk down to the bay, you take your dog, on, takes a dump with all those chemicals that it takes. That's blue clay down there. I have a cemented foot dug well. I have cancer, okay? I can't have dirty water. I check mine all the time. It doesn't go through clay. The blue clay, most of this town was shipped to cap our dump up there to encase it. So if you're on top, you've got this much, the only thing that's taking any of those cap, those, these carbons that they want out, was grass. Why is it the bay taking the same amount of carbon? Dam, and you have no hay, no grass. You let bushes grow it. Bushes grow deep, they grow underneath the clay, down below, they don't take any of that, those problems away. The dam was holding about eighty feet of mud back, all the way up to the pump station, all the way up to Big Dock. Where are you going to go with that contamination? I saw that figure and it kind of got lost, it was in this vicinity of $35 million? That exceeds a superfund. The state of New Hampshire, where would you go with that stuff if you took that dam out? That's coming down the river to me down in the bay. Nobody ever risks that. The dam needs to stay in. We'll get to one other point. You guys just negotiated for a first time with the church, for us to have our first above-the-dam access to the river, we've never had. Big one, plenty of parking. I don't hear anything about that. Nice enough that what the church did, all of these, come on, guys, you're not saying about that. I find that very suspicious. Which contract is involved, which contract is involved in this town and that one? I'll point it right, I'll put it right on the table, right where it's coming from. We watch, we all watch. We don't trust government anymore. It's why you got, you've got these corporations coming in, that are putting them in apartments as students, and they're coming in here and trying to force us down our throat. Not in a charter town without changing the charter. And I'm going to be right here on that charter, same way as I was last time. It's not in there. So keep in mind, like I say, I haven't seen those videos, so you can tell me, where you're going to put 35 million worth of chemicals?
You're about out of time, Mr. Gordon.
The, the other people showed up? If you could vote on votes, keep this in mind.
Is there anybody else?
Logan, Christian Matthews, thirty-one Kimball Way. I'd emailed this question and called, and I didn't get a response. Will repairs ensure the dam can handle a 100-year flood and/or a 500-year flood? Has that been modeled, decided at all? You don't have to answer this, but it's just, it's just-
We're not supposed to answer this.
Yeah, it's just, it wasn't in the staff reports, it wasn't any of the CAD drawings. Again, the question that we have is, if we're going to put in this much money, we don't know.
There's, on the website, there's all the backup information, there's hundreds of pages of reports, yes, it will be a hundred and fifty.
Perfect. The other question is just, it's a hindsight, it's 2020. The dam flooded over in twen, in 2006. We're doing a full $2 million bond in 2019. Again, we're going to pay about $850,000 in interest on the bond. Maybe this is one of those things, with hindsight, it's 2020, we could have put about $110,000 a year away, each year since then. One of those things, maybe if we put this money away every year, we can avoid paying almost half the bond in interest, which will keep property taxes low for all of us. Thank you.
John Perry, eleven oh nine, Miss Gas Street, New Mark, New Hampshire. Couple things are brought up about the dam. I think a lot of people don't understand that the dam isn't the controlling factor when it comes to flooding. The main, a couple main factors is the railroad bridge up above the dam, and also the 108 Bridge. But I just want to make it clear that that dam itself is not the controlling factor. That's the studies that came back from our engineers in 2013. So, before people think that removing the dam is the, is going to prevent flooding, that's not the case. I think that's pretty clear. If we stand on the bridge below the dam and look upstream, on the waterside, you can clearly see the water is much higher above the 108 Bridge than is on the dam. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Chris Carr, nine Riverbend Road. This evening, we have two bond issues we want to take a look at. One of them is a tax liability that's going to affect the tax rate. The second one is a user fee. I want to know why we have a difference between a user fee and a tax liability. I brought this up, and we had the, the water treatment plant, perk being upgraded, that was, the cost for that was put on solely for the individuals that are in the water system. Right now, the dam costs are going to be a tax liability. It's going to go against the town tax rate because it's a town asset. The upgrade to the wells and everything else that we're talking about tonight for $12 million is going to be a water system improvement for the water system people only. Why is that not a tech, why is that not a town asset, a town liability, the same as a school? I do not have children in this school, yet we all pay for a town asset, the school. The town facility water treatment plant and the water treatment facility upgrades that we're doing now for the $12 million should be considered a town asset, a town tax liability, and should not be a user fee placed upon only the individuals that are using the water system. Thank you.
Anita Klein, five B Bass Street, River Ridge condominiums. I want to second what the gentleman, two speakers before me, said, that we have two different engineering surveys that have demonstrated that it's not the dam that is the major factor in 100-year and 500-year- and 500-year floods in New Market. The dam creates recreational areas that I think a large number of people in this town use and appreciate, and we also, uh, it also brings other people to this area to use our recreational area, uh, areas and particip- or spend money in the town. So I'm really, I've lived here for 35 years, the dam, uh, and the, uh, swimming and skating and other activity, canoeing you can do on the lamprey, is just great. I'd hate to lose it.
My name is Cynthia Cogland. I live at 6 Bay Road in New Market. Um, this is my 20th year. I came to New Market for my job. The first place I lived was north of the dam in the impoundment area at Twin Rivers. And the very first year I was here, I went ice skating out down the river. It was fabulous. And I saw some people this week when I was walking, skating out on the ice over by the Piscassic River there where the impoundment is. And then I lived, um, south of the dam in Rivermore. I lived there for a year, and then I moved to Bryant Rock, which is right at the dam. And, um, so the water over the dam is part and parcel of the, of my life. And so, um, I chose to live here in New Market, first of all, because of the beautiful historic mill buildings in our downtown, and then of course, it all came because of the river. So they located here because of the asset with the river. And so, the mills and the, they're chicken and egg, the dam and the, and the mills, and it just celebrates it. So I spend a lot of time, I chose to volunteer to do the gardening at Bryant Rock, and so I see a lot of people walking through there. And I can tell you that I'm very surprised by the number of people who are coming to New Market now, and they walk across through that area to see the dam and to see the river. And they're choosing to come to New Market. They're talking to me, and what they're saying is, I'm coming from Massachusetts, I'm coming from Connecticut, I'm coming from New York. I'm here on the weekend, I'm here for the day trip. I used to go to Portsmouth, and now I come to New Market, and we just love it. It's the most beautiful place we've been to visit. And so when my neighbor talks about the viability of the people coming to this town to use that resource, it's, it's there. I hear it. I'm so surprised. But I also see all of my neighbors and the people in this town that go through that area, and it's part of their daily life. So, um, I'm also will be very supportive that Rick will no longer be in the height of these storms down there, opening up the waterworks, the dam works, and that this will all be automated, and that I won't have to look out and, and really fret and be nervous for the safety of our vigilant public works employees because they do an awesome job down there. So I, I very strongly support the expenditure of $2 million over 20 years for this payback over 20 years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, councilor. I'm Lauren Coliford, 512 Piscassic. I also would like to speak in favor of spending the $2 million to repair the dam. Um, since I live in Twin Rivers, which I'm sure a lot of people here do, uh, we know from previous exercises when the dam was, um, opened to do the study, we know that the Piscassic ended up becoming a little mud flat, um, which was basically, um, a mosquito nightclub, and it was very unpleasant. Um, I can also speak to the recreational opportunities like other people have out on the river, almost every single day, spring, summer, and fall, and snowshoeing in the winter. It's wonder- wonderful. It's one of the reasons that I ended up buying in this town. The other thing that I would just like to point out is that the fish ladder that that dam has is, I believe, the most successful fish ladder in the state of New Hampshire, um, which has been in effect, and they've been gauging it since it was built, with 2013 being the highest levels, uh, I think that we had to date, I saw on that report. So in addition to the dam being a great historical piece of the town, it keeps the Piscassic a river instead of a mud flat, and we're helping the population for fishermen and other recreational people by having that successful fish ladder. So if anything, I think we should repair the dam, spend the money. And, uh, I know that the New Hampshire fishing game does a minnow assist day where people can go and do, um, catch minnows and help them on their way upstream during the breeding season. So I think that the town should perhaps bring some attention to our new dam, our repaired dam, by making that a bigger town-wide event and getting more people involved in counting the fish and seeing what happens with our dam. Thank you very much.
I would like to thank you all for welcoming to New Market. I've only been here about three months. My name is Peter Gardina. Just like the flower, it's pronounced Gardina like the flower. Uh, I am a New Englander. I've lived in three different states in my life. Massachusetts, Connecticut, and New Hampshire. I've lived in Meredith, New Hampshire, Southern Connecticut, and Davis, Massachusetts. And I came here to retire. And what, I live at 703 Piscassic. I'm her neighbor. And what sold me was Lamprey River and the dam. That's why I moved here, to retire, believe it or not. I've got a few more years in the tank, but I think you guys are doing a great job. A little nervous, uh, but it's the dam that sold me, and I hope you fund it to keep it. It's a very historical value. Thank you.
One second.
Just, if you're interested in speaking in the, um, just to cut down on the time, could you come forward now? Because we'd like to get people lined up. That way, you don't, we don't have to wait every time in between.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Brienne. I live at 15 Lamprey Street. I've been living in New Market for about five years now. Uh, I apologize if this is not the form to bring this forward, but I can tell you, um, as somebody who is a single homeowner, the hit on my taxes recently from, you know, the school and all of the lovely changes that you guys have had, has been a little tough. So although I love our, our river, and I love our dam, and I love to go out and kayak and swim and have all of the advantages of what it brings, I am concerned that if I can't afford to continue to stay in this town, it's not going to matter what I can do in this town. And so I'm curious, as a town property owner, how this is going to affect us as the residents. I'd love to keep it, and it seems like the option right now is spend the $2 million and fix it, or, question mark, right? Uh, and so I'd love to know how, how that's going to impact us, and what are the alternatives if this doesn't go through. And I know this isn't meant to be a Q and A.
No, and I, I forgot to mention the impact at the beginning. That's my fault.
Thank you.
The first year impact would be six cents on the tax rate on the town side. The second year, we pay principal and interest. That would be 23 cents. This is using today's dollars per thousand. Um, and then it goes down from there over 20 years. As we said, if the removal is more expensive, then that would be a higher rate. We don't have an option. We can't do nothing. That's the only thing. Because if that happens, then we start paying fines that will be levied against us by DES. So we have to do one or the other, and this was the, the cost effective and the one that was more palatable at that time.
Perfect time for me to talk, because that's exactly what I want to discuss. I am Susannah Lawson, and I own 501 and 502 Piscassic. Going to be honest, I don't live in New Market. I purchased these to retire because I'm absolutely in love with being on the water. What I want to talk about is, if that water goes away, I will also be on the mud flat, and I would like to know when my properties will be reassessed because I'm paying a higher tax right now for being on the water. And so I assume that my taxes will go down because the value of my properties will go down. I'm also curious as to who will then pick that up, based on budget.
Hello, my name is Alex McDermott. I live at 46A North Main Street. Uh, we live just up the river from the dam, right on the lamprey. And as soon as we came to this town about two years ago, we were looking around for houses. We saw the property, we fell in love with it, especially because of the river frontage. We use the river a lot in the spring, summer, and fall. We just really love living on the river. We've got friends who live in Boston, who live in Portland. They come to New Market to visit us and to enjoy the river with us, and they spend money in the local economy. Uh, and we just really hope you save the dam, and please don't turn our riverfront property into a swampfront property. Thank you.
I'm seeing no one else to speak on the dam at this point. And so, at this time, we would close public hearing on the, on the McAllen Dam vote. Um, did you say you would, would you like to consider that warrant, you said, you're proposing-
I would amend that in order of time, so they, we'd ask you to sit through both, but, so we could recess after. But in order of time, so you don't have to sit through the entire meeting to watch them vote, that the council would vote on the resolution at this point in time? Does the council, does it object?
Are there any objections from the council? Seeing none, we'll move on, we'll change the order, and at this point, consider Resolution 2018-19-18 issuance of $2 million in municipal bonds for the McAllen Dam. And I'd appreciate a motion.
I will make that motion. Second?
Much in my counsel Weinstein, seconded by counsel Burns.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the council, I presented with you after, uh, bond council, as well as the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration reviewed our proposed language for the article to vote on, on March 12th, they had some changes. It's, it's purely clerical, it's not changing the substance. The numbers still say in the same. It's just that there's required wording that's in there. Uh, I'd ask that you make a motion to amend the resolution to adopt that wording. Uh, then it's quite lengthy, so you're not going to read the entire thing, um, to, to insert that wording into the warrant article.
So we need a motion to do so.
I will make that motion. Second?
Call the roll, please.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Now, this is still, now this is the amendment. That was the actual bond.
That's just the amendment to the wording needed to change. Not, not for the, to put the bond on the warrant article.
Just one other clarification.
Sure.
Uh, for the council, the vote you take tonight will reflect your recommendation or non-recommendation on, where we have to include the vote tally on the bo- bottom of the warrant. So if you vote yes, you're recommending. You vote no, you're not recommending.
Okay. Thank you. And is, are there comments from the, from anybody on the council at this point? Go ahead.
Um, so I've been on the council now for, it's my, oh, so this is my fifth year now on the council. And, um, when I first ran to be on the council, this was, this was a really big issue. So this is something that's been, that we've been talking about, oh, sorry. This, this is something that the council and the community has been talking about for years. And I want to say thank you to all of the, um, all the dam committee members who, and Chairman Pike, who have been working on this issue for such a long time. Um, there have been multiple opportunities for the public to provide input. Um, we've had votes at the council level, and certainly there have been dam committee meetings throughout the, at least the last six years. Um, so I appreciate all of the work that has gone into this process, and I definitely support, uh, putting this, moving this to the ballot.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll make just a couple of comments about the dam. Uh, it was, the dam committee, when I joined the council six years ago, the dam committee was sort of the thing I focused on first as a, as a town councillor. I think it's, we have been through a long process. That began before my time. And to be honest with you, in the early days, it wasn't even possible, uh, it wasn't even, didn't seem possible that we would be allowed to keep the dam under the regulations. But through productive meetings with, uh, the State Dam Bureau, they, they showed some flexibility on that. There's been a lot of negotiation back and forth about what we are required to do. Um, there's been a lot of money already spent in studies. So I think one of the things we, we intend to do as a dam committee, and over the next week or two, is try to put out some document that will try to at least put some, the, the facts as best we know them. Now, some of the things that you could answer, some of the questions that have come up, would cost, every time you want to answer a question with, with a higher degree of certainty, there are dollars associated with that. And if you want to know exactly what it would cost to take the dam out in New Market, it would cost, we already have spent a lot of money to try to answer that question. It would cost more money because there, as somebody has mentioned, there are sediments upstream of the dam, and we already heard from that consultant that we would have to test those sediments. They're almost, they're highly likely to be toxic. And if they are toxic, we would be required to excavate those sediments and take them to a toxic waste dump. So anybody that says that it's going to be less expensive to remove the dam is really just making their own estimation. They, there are no facts that would support that. And the estimates, you know, if we use Exeter an example, as the administrator has just said, that was, you know, they, they spent 1.6 million after all grants. That was their share. And, uh, so in the case of, and they didn't have sediments above their dam that they had to address like we do. So it's, it's very unclear that it would save any money to remove the dam. And in terms of keeping the dam, we, what was, what was nice about the proposal that the dam committee was able to bring forward was that it turned out not only to be, I think, an attractive, it will be a safer and more attractive dam if we go forward with this project. But it is also, uh, going to be easier to manage the fishway. It'll give the town better control over water levels when the herring are running. And it, and the Lamprey River is the largest hamper run, a herring run into Great Bay in that watershed. It's an important ecological resource for the town. And it is also true, there is some question of whether we would have to replace that fish passage were the dam to be removed, because there are falls underneath the present 108 bridge. And it's not clear that herring could pass that without some further modifications which could add costs. So of all of the plans that came forward, we were in many ways fortunate with this proposal, because it was not only the, I think, most attractive option, uh, for the, for the vast majority of people. Because I, one thing I'll also mention is, every hearing we have had where people talked about the dam, this is representative of what's happened. There may be one voice or two voices that is in favor of removal, but the overwhelming sentiment of the town, and this means residents of the town, has consistently been that they would like to keep the town, keep the dam. And I think what, what is fortunate is that the most attractive proposal that we've seen is also, believe it or not, the least expensive. And the, the last thing I would say too is, we're hopeful, we don't know, but we're hopeful that the cost of the dam proposal that we're seeing, that will, you know, the actual cost will be lower than the $2 million. It's totally appropriate to talk about this as a $2 million bond. I'm not trying to change that. But the original estimates, I mean, going back just a few months ago, were closer to 1.5. But there are several things, we're still in the process of paying for engineering to know about the dam. And while we don't have those answers, we have to assume the highest cost, even though we hope for a lower cost. So it, it may be somewhat under the $2 million, and that's worth knowing. And almost certainly, one of the reasons why we're trying to do it this way with some contingency and making estimates, is that if, if we were to postpone and take more time, our costs will go up. And likely interest rates will go up as well. So that's, that's some of the reasons behind where we are where we are. Uh, but as a dam committee, again, we plan to try to release more of this information so that it's fully available to the public. And with that, if there, are there any other more comments from the council? If not, please call the- If not, please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Council Bowden.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
So somebody who lives probably as far away from-
You've got to project.
You've got to, the mic, the mic's not working.
It doesn't have a microphone, that's what the problem is, the microphone only works to record the meeting, it doesn't go to the back.
So as far as somebody who lives as far away from the dam in New Market, I'll say Allen probably lives a little further away than-
I do. I do work in the mills, my office overlooks the water, it's a beautiful thing to see. I certainly appreciate what the river brings to us, brings to the community, brings to a mill town. I do appreciate everything that the people have worked on, the committees, boards, and I think one person in particular, Mr. Fillion, had mentioned something a ways back at one of the town meetings, and, which was very much appreciated, so I'm very much in support of the dam. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
So assuming everybody's staying in place, if not, please move now. Okay. We'll let those that are leaving, leave at this point, and then we'll begin the next public hearing.
Could you, could you please take outside conversations outside as well, because we do have a long agenda?
At this point, we would have public hearing begin on Resolution 2018-19-19 issuance of 12.65, 12.165 million in municipal bonds for water system improvements. Have a motion? Oh, no, public hearing, sorry. Sorry, I'm getting off, but, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the council's aware, the Water Department has, Department Environmental Services provided a, performed a 20-year build-out study for our water system. Earlier this year, myself and the Director of Environmental, Department of Environmental Services had met with, represented from Department of Rural Development for the federal government. At that point in time, they indicated to us that we would be eligible for additional funding from the federal government at this point in time, as a town of New Market's still considered rural, but probably, we're not going to be considered rural by the time of the next census. They recommended that we roll into a loan application from Rural Development, a number of our projects, because they look at it favorably for larger, larger projects to receive funding, partial funding from the feds. So as that, the Department Environmental Services for the town is recommending 12, $12,165,000 worth of projects. These projects include the Bennett and Sewell Well Improvement, the McIntosh and Tucker Well Treatment, the construction of the Tucker Well, the water main replacement on South Main Street, Bay Road, and New Road. For information, the South Main Street water main replacement is 1895 vintage pipe. It'll also include the extension of water main to the residents at Moody Point, they're having some issues with their water system, and we're working with them to address that. We've already been notified that we will be receiving a $2.9, $2.5 million loan, and $975,000 grant for the McIntosh and Tucker Well Treatment, as well as a $495,000 loan and $165,000 grant for the New Road Water Main Project from the New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Fund. We have to raise, by state law, we have to raise and appropriate the entire 12,100, sorry, find the code, $65,000. So we have to do it on a gross basis. This all, it'd have no impact on the tax rate, as was mentioned earlier, it would impact the ratepayers, as that is common as a municipal tool, that ratepayers pay for the water improvements. I do not know of any municipalities in the state of New Hampshire where the water system is paid for through taxation, it's used, it's used by user fees for those who are on it. The impact would be a 50 cent increase in the rate, and the average user would see a $24 per year increase each year for the next five years.
Okay, do we have anybody who wishes to make a statement or comment about this resolution?
Let's get out of Chris Carr, Nine River Ben Road. I understand that, you know, you want to have this as a user fee, apparently the RSA or something says that it's a user fee. I think it's grossly unfair that the users now are paying off a $10 million bond for the facility, the water treatment plant facility, and now you're asking us to go on top of that another $12 million bond. That, that is just outrageous, that a small portion of the town is going to be footing a $22 million bond. It's just outrageous. Another question I have is on the, on the bond. According to this, as you were mentioning, we have the loans and the grants, so the loans come up to 3.42 million, and the grants come up to 1.14 million. How is that figured into the 12.165 grant?
As I just said, we have to do it on a gross basis, so we have to do 12, that's the total project, is 12.165.
Correct, but if we've already got a grant for 1.4, why are we still asking for it?
We have to do that by state law, we have to appropriate the entire amount. I, I, DRA requires us to do so.
All right, well, okay, thank you.
Christian Matthews, 31 Kimble Way. Is there something specific to this resolution that a dead schedule was not posted on the agenda?
Because we're not doing municipal bond.
What, what type of bond is it, would it be the-
We're doing loans from various funds.
Okay.
But we have to call it a bond.
Okay. So will there eventually be a document posted where we could see how much the ratepayers are paying in terms of-
We just said, it will be, yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Cynthia Copley, Sixth Bay Road. And as I said in my prior statement, I came here 20 years ago to New Market, but I came here because of my job, and so I recently retired as the Executive Director of Stratford Regional Planning, and so New Market is a member of that Regional Planning Commission, and so during the 19 years that I worked there, we worked very extensively with the town of New Market, updating master plans and zoning and working on water issues, coastal hazard, hazardous planning. And so I've always been impressed, there's 18 communities in the Stratford region, and I've always been impressed with the street smarts and savviness of the town of New Market, and being able to find a way to take the costs and find the grants, find the loans, and to establish and improve and upgrade the, the water systems, the pro regulations, and also just based on use, and then, and also the need to expand. And so I'm, I'm always felt very proud to be from New Market because of their abilities to be so savvy, and their ability to meet the needs of the users of the community, and also to find a way to keep the costs at bay at the lowest possible. So I am a user, and I pay the fees, and I think this is very reasonable for the system as a whole, and I'm very glad that we're gradually taking the process forward to upgrade it and make sure that we have good water for the residents and businesses in New Market.
When Cushing Road went in, and that fight was with David Engel, which was supposed to go through one of my neighbor's houses, was going to try to go up Smith Carus and go out that way to get there, the agreements, the original agreements, they're supposed to maintain from the corner of Cushing, all the way, all the way to that pump house and all the way down there. And did I hear that we're part of this, we're paying, we're now paying for that road as part of their fees? That was the agreement going in, in that road.
I don't think you heard that. I don't think you heard that, that, I'm not, we're not, it's not really a Q and A, but I don't think you heard that. Do you, do you have another comment you wanted me?
No, I was just, like I say, when that went in, I couldn't pull the records on it. I don't know. Thank you.
Any other comments relative to this bond question? Seeing none, we, we will close the public hearing on 2018-19-19.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, make a motion first.
So we're ready to make a motion?
Yes, please.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018, 2019-19.
Second?
Before the council votes on this, again, this was, this article was reviewed by Bond Counsel, as well as the Department of Revenue Administration, and there's three minor changes to the wording that's different than the resolution, so I'd ask that the council amend it to reflect the wording that was presented to them this evening.
So move.
Second?
Motion by Council Weinstein, seconded by Council Cast to amend the resolution.
Please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Any comments from the council before we have a vote on this?
I just had a question. If it doesn't pass on, on the vote by the town, what happens to the loans and grants?
We can lose them. We'd also lose our rural development money. And it'll cost, instead of less than 12, 12.165 million, it'll cost us, that plus whatever the increase will cost in construction cost by putting it off. So that's why we're asking at this point in time. Council Bowden.
Where did the numbers come from? How did we get to 12 million?
Sean? You have to speak up.
Understood.
What was the question?
How do we get to the, how did we get to the $12 million figure?
When we talked to Rural Development, they said the right amount for projects is around 12 million, was around $10 million, and when you, and that's why we got to that figure.
We took the, the projects that equal that amount off of our capital improvement plan that the engineers worked on, can we put it towards that?
So, so in other words-
I don't know what you're, yeah, I don't know what you're holding up, can't see it.
So in other words, what happens is, projects within a certain amount go to the estate pool, going to the bigger amount goes to the federal pool, which allows us to leverage and get more money.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, perhaps I could make a comment on that, is it just, I, I, I've seen, I mean, some people, you could look at this and say it's a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but it is more efficient, and I think that's what the, the granting and lending agencies are saying, it's more efficient to make it of us do, bundle a bunch of these projects together, and borrow and, and plan them at one time rather than do it in smaller increments. Is that a fair statement, Sean?
Just at inflationary costs, it's estimated we'd save about $800,000.
Right.
And then if we get 25% funding on the whole projects, that's another, you know, two and a half million dollars that doesn't have to be spent, and it's less interest because then your loan size is a lot less.
So there's-
So there's a lot of money to be saved.
Right, so that's the point I'm trying to make in here, they, we're sort of being encouraged to make this a bigger project rather than a lot of smaller projects, because it's more efficient to do it that way. In, the, the reward for doing it that way is that, first of all, we can, we can bid a lot of these things earlier and save money at a time when inflation is kicking in on construction costs. We're still borrowing when inflation, when interest rates are relatively low, what, compared to what they've historically been, and we're able to get more grant money, you know, more favorable terms, more grant money, because we're doing it in a bigger chunk. So it's, it's saving money while at the same time, we take a system that in some areas has been somewhat antiquated, and in some areas isn't as robust as it would be, because the pipes are old, or they're not looping the way they would, it's, you know, I'm, I'm not a technical person for this, but this makes our system stronger. I think it would have seemed more urgent, what was it, summer of 2016, when we were really worried about our water systems, drought could happen at any time, I think it's, the value of the water will really be apparent, we've got a new well that's coming online with the Tucker Well, and to make that all work and have the greatest, you know, level of, of robustness, greatest level of certainty in our, in our water system, you, we have to do these other infrastructure improvements. So that's my comment there. Seeing no other comments, please call the roll.
Again, just for clarification, this will also reflect the recommendation on the warrant. Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Council Dumont has to attend to the Budget Committee.
Sure, you're excused?
I may. Yeah, just with respect to my fellow town councillors due to budgetary requirements, I have to go upstairs. If we finish prior to you guys concluding, I will rejoin you. If not, thank you for your time.
Perhaps we could take, if we'd like a five minute, does anybody, would anybody like a quick break to use the facilities, or?
Take a five minute recess?
Yes. Five minute recess, please.
Hey, Steve?
Yeah.
Do you have this?
Yes, that's part of the project, so this whole- Yes, that's part of the project, so this whole-
Plows, last year we were over on the budget, so we didn't replace anything, we held off, so we had to buy more than on hand, we replaced a bunch on plows and then had stock for when we had to swap them out, and that's the reason for that.
Perfect, thank you. My second question or comment is about the police report, and I think that, I've pointed this out in the past, and now that 2018 is over and we have final numbers, Chief Tru is very, has been very involved in the Newmarket ASAP Group, and, as well as Officer Bodett, and, and the town really has done a lot of work on that, and so the numbers are, reflect the work that they've done. I think it's, again, my computer has frozen, but it's gone down every year just drastically. I think we're at six, I think was the number, it was six or eight overdoses for the entire 2018, which is just incredible, so they should really be recognized for that. Oh, yeah, six overdoses, from, and in, just four years ago, it was forty-five overdoses, and it's gone down every year, so they've just done a phenomenal job. And then my last comment was just about facilities, because we had approved a very large project just last month, and I didn't know if in the future reports from facilities, if we could get some timeframes for construction, Steve?
Sure.
And just where we're at with all, with the various projects. And that's all I have.
Anyone else?
Quick.
Council Bowden?
On the facilities report, says we're projecting to install the gate operator in January. That is for?
I don't think, I, I'm having a tough hearing, if you can-
On the facilities report, says we are projecting to install the gate operator in January, but the part's already on order. Where is that?
That's Herring Point.
Herring Point.
That is, okay.
Yep.
Want to make sure about that. Also on facilities, it mentions, been working on stormwater operation and maintenance manual, local property owner wishing to construct a new facility. Operation and maintenance spell out requirements that the property must meet regarding maintenance and reporting to the town. Was that in regards to the planning board, meeting for a person who had, you reviewed an application for a development on Exeter Road, which would include new Permianville service? So that's-
I'm sorry, so what was the question? I recognize the-
Is the, okay, so that, that project there, is that related to the stormwater operation and maintenance manual that they're working on with a local property owner wishing to construct a new facility?
Yes.
Thank you. Public Works, North Main Street project is at one hundred percent, says competition, should it be completion?
Yeah, it was a typo.
IT, looking at the number six in regards to accepting credit cards, is that, they're having some issues there, where they're being, the process has been less than efficient? Company do a security scan of our credit card setup and then sent us an email telling us it failed. Is that taken out of PCI compliance?
No.
You sure?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations to Lieutenant Gregory Jordan, my son's buddy, promotion from sergeant to lieutenant. Serving as division commander in Patrol Division, as well as Officer Stephen O'Brien, being promoted to sergeant.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Seeing no other questions, comments on the report, and we move on to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report?
I have one, a brief one. Conservation Commission met on Thursday, January tenth, right? It says eleventh on here, but it's tenth. Thursday, January tenth, it was a fairly brief meeting. We discussed some of the, the property surveys that have been completed on local conservation lands. The only respect to which the dam was brought up, because it was mentioned earlier, was the dam, the McKellen Dam permit was brought up, so that was a pretty brief approval process, just to expedite that process in the case that the dam gets approved by the town in the March ballot, so that was the only manner in which that was brought up. Herring Point's, electrical is running, it's hooked up, and the gate is still kind of being worked on, but obviously with snow and stuff, it'll more likely be spring before it's one hundred percent installed with the sensors in the road and stuff. The Commission is planning on getting the word out about our conservation lands, so they're doing a, we'll be doing a photo contest for the course of the summer, there's going to be an outing with a photographer being planned, kind of, just to, kind of, do a little field trip, and the Conservation Commission set up an Instagram account to kind of show pictures and maps of our properties, and there's also a Facebook page that does the same thing. And that's it from the Conservation Commission.
Do you have one? No, the only one, then, I'll add is that, and I've kind of alluded to it, so I'll be brief, is the dam committee did meet today, we met with the three butters for the dam, and made sure we're ready, because I think if it wasn't clear before, we're actually starting to send out documents to try to get interested, so that contractors will bid on this in advance of the warrant article. With, of course, with the understanding that the, that if the warrant article fails and if the dam is turned down, none of this will move forward, but the idea is that there have been examples where if you get very far along in the season and the contractors are busy, then it's going to be harder to get a, to get them interested in bidding on your project, and we want as many highly qualified entrants to bid on this as possible, so, and it was, at this point, we're down to final details. For example, for Bryant Rock has been interested in that, there's a building there that is, is what houses the mechanicals that operate those gates, and that, that building is, it had hoped to be, that it could be fully sunken into the ground, it can't be, because there's, there's a retaining wall that extends further underground level than we realize, but it will be able to only expose about three feet of that, so some of those details sort of are, are part, are worked out, and we need all of the butters on board when we start moving forward with the project. So that's it for committee reports. And we move on to resolution, I appreciate a motion to approve resolution 2018-19-21, wastewater treatment plant solids disposal.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2018-2019-21.
Second?
Motion by Council Weinstein, second by Council Bowden.
Thanks for having me tonight, here to talk about the solids from the wastewater treatment plant, just to keep it simple. From the treatment process, we generate about fifty-five tons of solids a month, and we have to dispose of that. What we've done, in the past, we have taken it to the Turnkey landfill. We sent out a request for bids, there are six firms that we found that actually do this, and take it and dispose of it. We had one firm say that they're full and they can't take anymore, and that was resource management. We had a couple other firms that come in and looked to take it, but they couldn't because they use tractor trailers, and we cannot use tractor trailers, they will not fit in our bay, because they can only make it cost effective because of hauling. So we received two bids, one from Turnkey and one from Casella, and in the staff report, you'll see that the, there's a comparison, a three-year comparison on the costs. Turnkey was the lowest cost, eighty-eight thousand for the first year, and it was ninety-five, nine forty for the first year for Casella. Casella's cost did not change, it stayed ninety-five forty based on the six hundred and sixty tons, and, but Turnkey was less every single year, even though they increased every year. So, being the cheapest at Turnkey, looking for a permission to use Turnkey to enter into a contract with them and dispose of our solids every year.
Okay. Any questions? Councilor Dumont, welcome back, and we're, we're about to, we're, we're considering right now 2018-19-21, the solids disposal for the wastewater treatment plant. And we just had the statement on there explaining the bid process, which was explained in there, and are there any comments or questions from the council?
I, I just wanted to confirm, it's not fixed price, though, right? It is based on number of hauls?
It, it's based on the tonnage that we haul out in the hauls.
Yeah.
Just to give you a heads up, I'm looking to run a pilot on this, on drying the solids this spring. I'll be doing an RFQ with that with some engineering, because we're still learning about how dry we can get it, the drier we get, the cheaper it is, because the less water, and I have determined if we can get it up to thirty percent solids rather than twenty, we'll save about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year in hauling.
What are, what are the considerations for that pilot? Is it just time, additional cost, or figuring out the process, or?
It's stabilizing what we're getting now for a percentage, so we can see what the difference is. The other piece is I'm working with some manufacturers to bring in some equipment to pilot, to thicken- pilot, to thicken it before we process it.
So it may be equipment cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, but I, if, if the total project costs us $125,000 to do, you know, over 26, 27, or 30,000 savings, it'll pay it back in, in the life of the equipment's 20 years.
Water's heavy.
Yeah, water's very heavy. Eight pounds per gallon.
Okay. Anyone else please call the roll?
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
All abstained.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero to one. Thank you.
Accept a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19-22, which is the purchase of a 2020 international dump truck with plow equipment.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-22.
Second.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This truck's been in the fleet. It's a front-end truck. It has, we kept it a couple more years and we anticipated, this is a state bid price to replace this vehicle. It'll take six to eight months for it to be built and come in and so forth. The current truck, we're only utilizing it for snow, because it's, has so many issues at this point. We don't use it for anything other than that, but we have to apply on purposes, because we don't have another truck. But we kept it for two more years, as I said, and it's, it's state bid price.
Just for the council's verification, that when we say state bid price, we look, the state goes out to bid for vehicles on a massive, because of the numbers, they, they need to buy in other municipalities, and we're allowed to receive prices at their bid price. It's usually, it's 99 percent usually cheaper than what we do.
This is a, a question that applies to, did you have one that you wanted?
I, I do.
Go ahead.
You sure?
Sure.
Okay. So, this isn't specific to this, just to this resolution, it's to both resolutions that we have in front of us tonight. Because our capital reserve fund has almost $400,000. And with these two resolutions that we have in front of us, we're going to spend almost all of that.
Sure.
And I looked, you know, I looked at all of the, the trucks that are, that are in, in the queue to, to be replaced over just, I mean, I didn't even go out into the current fiscal year, and we're, it's over $800,000. And so I guess, I'm curious what we're going to do.
That was my question, by the way.
As a community, because, and, and one of the, and, and just to, and just to go back, the second truck is listed as a replacement cost of 160, but yeah, it's 224. And so, and that scares me.
So, this is the discussion we had at the budget meeting earlier this year. This is the changing of us from putting all this money in capital reserve fund to switching over, odds are in the future it'll be coming in for lease purchases. So you'll see a flat rate now in his operating budget. You'll see less to go in the capital reserve fund, but it'll go into the operating budget, his operating budget for lease purchases. Say that's vehicles, we do it. That also is a way to get us on the actual, changing it once the lease is up. It's like, it's more common to do that in municipalities than is what we're doing. And by, this is the, the old way to do it, was what we're currently doing, the way to do it, with municipalizing, is the, better in the long run.
Along that lines, has that, has that been analyzed? Is there an objective way to know which is sort of, which is more cost-effective, do you know, or, I mean, if we're doing it that way, I'm not objecting to it. I'm just wondering how.
Yeah. I, I do, I haven't, I mean, I just, I mean, pack of envelope, from my experience. The only, only difference is that if there's like a catastrophic failure of some sort, we don't have a fund that we can go into, we can go to the fund balance and withdraw to do something, but we could have to cut back on the operating budget during the year to lease something.
Right. Because you're, and the reason, problem is, we're not allowed to have an emergency fund.
We are not.
You know, you can't have an emergency fund. So you can have a lot of funds where money is sort of, sometimes we have money that can, can be there for a while, and, and that's not the most efficient either. So, finding the best way.
Yeah. And to be honest, this is better, it's somewhat better for some of the department heads as well. We haven't been funding what Rick needs to do to replace his trucks. So this will allow him to come in with smaller amounts to, knowing what he needs to do at the beginning of the budget year and get that done. Versus, okay, I only have X amount in my fund, I can't do these vehicles.
Okay. So, are there any other comments on the Resolution 2018-19-22? If not, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
I have a resolution to approve 2018-19-23, which is the purchase of a 2020 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-23.
Second.
The current street sweeper is 20 years old, we can't get parts for it anymore. And under the new nitrogen plan and so forth for removing nitrogen, street sweeping's a huge part of that for us with the EPA, which that plan you guys recently approved. So we have to purchase a street sweeper that's specific to certain requirements. That's why the unit is so expensive. And to, to, to contract this out, with the amount of sweeping we have to do and monitoring, it's, it's just crazy, like $80,000 a year. Just, that's just a baseline. So, this is a source well, which is like national bid, it's a part of our purchasing process. And a lot of municipalities around us purchasing the same type of sweeper, so the parts are We would basically, they're going to take that and trade and give us $3,000, but we are required to have a street sweeper. Ours is, we can't use it, it's parked, it's a lot of source.
Yeah, just so that the council know, contracting was popular, do street sweeping a while ago. That's gone away because of new MS, MS four requirements. The only way you could contract is if basically you have no stormwater drains, and they come in like once or twice a year. We have to address it when we, when there's issues. One thing we will look at though, is other municipalities, if they need street sweeping services, because they can't afford a sweeper, that we would be able to go over and sweep for them and charge them rates. So it could also help us with making some money.
They're not similarly limited by the MS four to have one sweeper?
No, because they're too rural, they don't have the same stormwater situations in some communities. I know, I think Greenland's one of those.
The little ones, yeah.
Yeah, it's not all, but, yeah.
Okay. Counsel Dumas?
Just a quick question. $230,000 street sweeper, what do you think the average life will be on this vehicle? Obviously, the first one lasted 20 years, which is awesome, but do you expect to get another 20 years out of this?
We'll get 20, because we have to, we are going to have to sweep more frequently. You'll see the sweeper a much more frequently. We have to document the sweeping now and submit it. So we'll be lucky to get 12 years out of the sweeper. They're, they're saying 10, we're saying we'll try to get 12. But that's what they're recommending.
But still money well worth spent for what we need and for the type of equipment available?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Seems like we lack a choice.
So, so just to clarify, in the next, in our next fiscal year, because we didn't add any lease agreements, so we won't see any requests for trucks, because we don't have the funds for them, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
Through...
We're only putting 75 in come July if the budget passes.
Right.
And we can't pay for a lease through capital reserve fund, because you have to have an appropriation.
So we'll be in a holding pattern for a couple of years.
Right. And so if one of the trucks that we need breaks down...
We fix it, but we have to come into DRA and ask for emergency.
The fleet, aside from these two vehicles, is in
Is in good shape?
In better shape than just...
Okay. Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
I would next accept a motion to appoint Stephen Minutelli to the ZBA for a zone of boarding appeals, a zoning board of approvals. The term expires March 2020.
I'll make a motion to appoint Stephen Minutelli to the ZBA with a term expiring March 2020.
Second.
And he's been serving as an alternate. It looks very qualified based on the application.
Agreed.
Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Dumas.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Go ahead.
Ordinance in the first reading, ordinance number one, 2018-2019. An ordinance amending Chapter 20 offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Code of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire prohibiting the purchase, use, and possession of tobacco products to anyone under the age of 21. The Town of Newmarket ordains, the purpose of this ordinance is to amend Chapter 20 offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Cap, Code of the Town of New, Newmarket, New Hampshire prohibiting the purchase, use, and possession of tobacco products to anyone under the age of 21. Chapter 20 is hereby amended by adding the following article. Section 20-9, purchase, use, and possession of tobacco products. No person under the age of 21 shall, one, purchase a tobacco product or electronic cigarette; two, use or possess tobacco products or electronic cigarettes. No person or business shall sell or provide a tobacco product or electronic cigarette to a person under the age of 21. For purposes of this ordinance, the term tobacco product shall include any product defined as tobacco in RSA 126K, and any person violating the provisions of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of up to $50 for the first offense, and up to $100 for the second or subsequent offense. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days after passage and publication of notice as required by RSA 4718. Mr. Chairman, this needs to be held over for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay. And, any comment on the correspondence to the town council?
We had the one from AC, A-N-C-E-R, but I believe it's already, that was already been distributed to the council.
Right.
And if it's on the record.
It's on the record, and we're, the, the discussions around that will be held at the next meeting, is that what?
Yeah. Initially, was my intention to give to you guys tonight the final recommendation from the Water Rights Subcommittee. Obviously, we had a bit of a packed agenda, so it just made sense to bump it over one more meeting. So I'm hoping that you folks will have the finalized version in the next week or so, to have time to review and take it from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any closing comments by town councillors?
Okay. About Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And with that...
And the filing period?
Is now, and, it has opened today and closes a week from Friday.
For, for anyone who wants to run for any elected positions in town.
Correct. And school.
And school, yes.
Okay. And with that, we are returned.